So Mayor Rubicoff, you have your entire city council in attendance.
All right, wonderful. Well, thank you, everybody for being here and welcome to our special meeting of November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. We will call this meeting to order at six oh one P M. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Sanchez Palacios.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Halter.
Here.
Councilmember Friedman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schrader.
Here.
Mayor Rubicava.
Here.
All right, so now we will continue with the pledge of allegiance and I will invite Councilmember Johnson to lead us in the pledge, please.
Thank you. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. And now we will continue with our closed session report. Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Andy Heckland.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. Tonight, there was a closed session that was held to discuss the agenda's item and there is no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heckland. And now we have city council communications. Would my colleagues like to share any council communications? I'm flipping through the screens here, so keep your hand raised in case you have your hand raised. All right, it seems like we have no council comments tonight.
Councilmember Sanchez Palacios had her hand raised.
Okay, sorry about that. Councilmember Sanchez Palacios.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, just wanted to share, uh, I was able to attend the, uh, reception at the, uh, Ventura County Museum, uh, for Arte para la Gente, the collected works of Margaret Garcia. This weekend, and I just want to encourage our community to go out and, um, experience the exhibit, quite vivid with colors and culture. Um, and I think, uh, you know, just, I think, uh, a real great asset to our community. Um, the exhibit will run through spring of next year, so it's there now. Um, and again, it was just encouraging to, to see our community, um, be able to have this sort of, um, cultural experience and, um, I want to specifically thank, um, Elena Brokaw, um, as, as well as Anna Bermudez, who, uh, curated the exhibit. And so, um, thanks for, for all of that and, and just, uh, wanted to show the postcard. I don't know if you can see it. Um, but it's just a really great, uh, exhibition. Encourage all of my colleagues to go as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez Palacios. Those are beautiful color, colors, so we hope that our community can enjoy some time out and about now that we can be social. Any other council communications? All right, it seems like now we have no other council communications. All right, and so now we have city manager communications.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Just a couple of very quick announcements and reminders to the council and to the public. Uh, the public will remember the council adopted the organics recycling, um, ordinance, uh, last week or at its last council meeting, rather. And, uh, we're just here to announce tonight that in our city's environmental team will host two workshops, uh, virtual workshops for residents and businesses to learn about our new organics recycling requirements. Uh, the first residential workshop will be Tuesday, November sixteenth at six P M. And the second workshop focused on businesses and owners of multifamily properties will be on Wednesday, November seventeenth at two P M. And, uh, both workshops will be live translated to Spanish and recordings will be posted online. And for more information, please visit the city's website, uh, to register at, to learn more about S B thirteen eighty-three. Second item is, uh, an ongoing issue that you've heard about. In fact, it's one of the council's ongoing goals this year is our redistricting efforts. As a reminder, residents are encouraged to join the city's redistricting process and share input, input as part of our district mapping phase. Open now through December tenth, residents can submit electronically with map drawing tools available online or pick up printing maps. Office at City Hall. And obviously, for more information, please visit our website. Um, and a final reminder to the council, as we're coming towards the end of our calendar year, two more very important council meetings, December sixth. Council will hear, um, the streamlining ordinance and December thirteenth will be the council's second meeting on goal setting. Uh, that's all I have for now, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager McIntyre. All right, and so now we have our next item on the agenda is our consent items. And we have two consent items tonight. Nine A, move all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be deemed read by title only and all further reading be waived. Nine B, consideration of a resolution making required finding to continue to allow city council and all of its subordinate bodies to meet remotely pursuant Assembly Bill three six one. Would my colleagues like to pull an item or have questions or comments on an item? All right, if there are none, then we will entertain a motion.
I move to, I motion to move, uh, oh, my Lord. I motion to approve as recommended.
I'll second.
All right, uh, motion by Councilmember Brown, second by Councilmember Sanchez Palacios. Uh, Madam Clerk, please proceed with the vote.
Now is the time for city council to vote on a consent agenda items nine A through nine B. Councilmember Sanchez Palacio.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Halter.
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Schrader.
Yes.
Mayor Rubicava.
Yes.
That motion carries seven zero.
Wonderful, thank you. And so that we will continue to our next item, which is our formal items. We have thirteen A, our two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three city council goal setting session. And for that, we have our city manager, Mr. McIntyre.
Uh, good evening again, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I am very pleased to be here tonight to kick off our first of three goal setting meetings. And as a reminder to the council, the, uh, the purpose of the goal setting is, is multi-fold, but really primarily it is to begin the first public process for our budget building process. And the reality is, we want to make sure that anything the council would like us to do this year, we make sure we have the resources and we have dedicated funds to do so. Um, the goal setting process will be done a little bit differently this year and next slide, please. I'm going to introduce, oh, sorry, let me walk you through very quickly what we're going to do tonight. We'll introduce our facilitator. Um, she will then, uh, start the conversation about developing the goals. You'll hear three distinct presentations, one by myself with regards to our existing work plan, the, the status thereof. Also, you'll hear a personnel capacity presentation by, um, H R Director Danielle. Um, uh, and then finally, our financial capacity presentation by our finance and technology director. Um, and with that, next slide, please. And let me take a moment. The council had asked, uh, for, uh, kind of a different setup this year that we use a third-party facilitator to undertake the goal setting process. And I was more than happy to do so, and I'd like to introduce Nicole Lance. Nicole comes to us, um, from the great state of Arizona. Nicole has worked with the city before. She has helped your executive team on through team building both in two thousand and nineteen as well as she will be back this week to, uh, continue that team building process. I'm going to turn it over to Nicole and I will be back later on in the meeting. Thank you.
All right, good evening, everybody. Uh, Tracy is going to be running the show from her end as far as my slides go, so Tracy, I think you're getting those set up. Thank you so much. Okay, um, so when I begin, Tracy, if you can go next slide. Um, my company, when we do strategic planning, we like to start a little bit different. So whether it's a full-blown strategic plan, council priority setting, um, we really kind of center the entire process around this quote, that we cannot solve our problems with the same thinking that we used when we created them. Because if we want a different outcome, we need to begin to do things differently, which is really where, when Alex and I were talking about how to set up the process this year, it was really clear that we're ready to try something different in order to get a different outcome. Now, before we begin, I want to talk a little bit about Zoom fatigue. So Tracy, go to the next one and you can click right past that one. Um, because there is kind of an interesting thing going on with virtual meeting burnout. So this is one of those like memes that didn't age well from the beginning. And if you're wondering why I'm starting with this, again, it is to intentionally set a different tone for the presentation. Um, we've also learned things, next slide, uh, like how to turn ourselves into potatoes. Hopefully, most of you have learned how to turn that function back off. Um, next slide, we've learned how to change our daily approach to work depending on, yep, go ahead to the next one, Tracy. Uh, depending on what we have scheduled, right, whether it's audio only, whether video is actually required. Um, next slide, we've also learned new things that are annoying, like when the Zoom meeting is about to end and somebody asks a question. And we've adapted in different ways. Next slide, like doing the awkward Zoom wave, right? So we get out of a meeting and then all of a sudden, everybody's waving, which normally we wouldn't have done in any other environment. Next, what is really going on? So there's actually a psychological effect happening here. So when we go to next slide, the view on our screen where we have kind of everybody up on the screen and it's a couple of feet away from us, what this simulates is actually something called a close space conflict encounter. Next slide, think Jack Nicholson in The Shining coming through the bathroom door. What this means is that just by virtue of getting on a virtual meeting, our stress levels are going to increase. Now, what else is happening? Next slide, sorry, then we'll get to why the audio is annoying right here when I keep saying next slide. Um, next, one of the things that is happening is we spend all day trying not to look at ourselves or try not to look like we are looking at ourselves with the video going on on the screen. Um, next slide. And if anybody has ever said this to someone or had it said to them, I'm pretty sure we could all kind of share that experience. And what's interesting, next slide, is that audio is actually the main reason video meetings are draining. And what happens is if there's even any sort of delay or where you have someone else running slides for somebody else and there's something, um, unnatural in, like next slide, next slide, next slide, that's actually one of the fastest ways to increase stress in any meeting, whether or not there are technical issues or anything going on the internet. Now, the other thing that's happened lately, most of two thousand and twenty, all of two thousand and twenty-one so far, next slide, is that we are not producing the amount of oxytocin that we normally do. Now, this is the brain hormone that helps us form bonds with each other. Next slide, think trust. This is how we begin to trust each other. And the number one way that we produce oxytocin, particularly when we look at groups that are collaborating, coming into conversations like this, an outside facilitator trying to build trust with the group is, next slide, eye contact, eye contact. And what is the only thing that is completely impossible in a virtual environment, aside from actual high fives? Eye contact, it's physically impossible because I can either look into the piece of glass and plastic on top of my monitor or I can look down and try and read your body language and your facial expressions. So where does this leave us? Next slide. Where does this leave us? If you're anything like me and like most of my clients that I work with, next slide, it will leave you like SpongeBob, just ready to explode, kind of over it, stress levels are heightened. So, next slide, before we get started, I'm going to ask you to do something with me, which is panticulate. Now, if anybody's uncomfortable with that, I assure you it's appropriate in a public meeting. Panticulation, next slide, is the thing that any animal with a spine does. So lions do it, little kitty cats do it, babies do it, if you swaddle them and they wake up in the morning. It's our body's natural way of releasing dopamine, which is one of the feel-good chemicals, and it will lower our stress, meaning for the purposes of this meeting or any time that you do it, you're actually going to lower that stress level, meaning you will be able to be more present for the conversation. So, next slide, we're just going to do it, go ahead and give me a little bit of a panticulation, even if you feel silly and you don't want to participate. Again, this is part of the ways that we formulate that group conversation. This is also truthfully one of the ways that we're going to be able to be more present for the conversation. Okay, next slide. Public panticulation over, you're safe. All right, who am I? Next slide, my name is Nicole Lance and I am one of the managing partners here at Extraordinary Balance. Next slide, and the kind of phrase that we use in our company is that we do things differently intentionally to accelerate the speed of government. So every time I say the phrase, "The speed of government", there's something that pops into your head and it's not generally something you want to be associated with. Now, I have over a decade and a half of experience working in or with municipalities, counties and state government. And so this has really become the center point of the focus of my company. Next slide, doing things like strategic planning, diversity and inclusion work, executive coaching, um, all over. A little bit about me, next slide, Tracy, is that I spent, like I said, almost a decade and a half working in local government. So serving as an assistant city manager, Parks and Rec Director, Public Works Director, Budget Manager, long-range financial planning analyst and kind of everything in between. I'm also one of the founders of Arizona Women Leading Government, which is an organization here in Arizona dedicated to building up more women leaders. So now my consulting work happens, um, really all across the country and throughout Canada with some of my clients there. On the personal side, next slide, this is my family. This is my stepdaughter, Micah, up on the top left. She's a sailor in the United States Navy. Um, was deployed at the beginning of two thousand and twenty and subsequently shattered the U.S. naval record for consecutive days at sea without a port. They had two hundred and thirty-two days on the ship without being able to get off of it. So that was her first, uh, deployment experience. And my husband and I thought after eighteen and a half years, wouldn't it be fun to just start from scratch? So that's my little one Emerson down on the bottom left, and that's the only normal picture I could find of my husband Sean. So if you don't believe me, next slide, this is what option number two looked like. If you still don't believe me, next slide, this is what option number three looked like. Now, why bother with some of that? Because it is important to have some sort of authentic connection before we enter into conversations that potentially might get a little bit courageous. Either when we're learning something, we're in a new space, or we're trying to decide really the right way to go. So I wanted to share a little bit about me. Um, and then if you would, please, because I've met, um, Alex and most of the staff, if we could do, and maybe, um, Antoinette, maybe you could facilitate this for me. I'd love to just go through, uh, next slide and hear from the mayor, deputy mayor, and on down through the council, just very briefly, a little bit about you. I've read the bios online. Anything else that you might want to add for this conversation?
All right, thank you, Nicole. How about we start with council members? So if you want to go ahead and raise your hand, once you're ready to go, council members? Or maybe I should just call on council members? Okay, maybe let's go by districts. Uh, we'll start with District Seven. So Deputy Mayor Schrader.
Hi, uh, Joe Schrader, recently retired, um, uh, as the C E O of Ventura County Credit Union. Graduated from Cal Poly Pomona with undergraduate and graduate degree, love golf and reading. I hope that's enough.
That's great.
All right, thank you. And now we will continue with Councilmember Brown.
You know, Madam Mayor, I wondered why you didn't start with District One. Okay, um, so my name is Lori. Um, I'll just start out with the fun stuff. I'm a certified scuba diver. I ride horses every weekend. That's my latest thing. Um, I have a master's in public quality and administration. I've always known that I was going to run for office. Um, and, uh, my background's in economic development.
Great.
Background as an educator. I don't know.
That's all. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Friedman.
Thank you, Jim Friedman, uh, representative for Ventura District Five. Uh, was on the council originally from nineteen ninety-five to the end of two thousand and three. Um, took a fifteen-year hiatus. We broke up into districts in two thousand and seventeen. Came back to run in my district. Uh, was successful. My professional background is, um, uh, financial planning, um, finance. And, um, you read the rest on the bio.
All right, great.
Councilmember Santos Palacios.
Um, good evening, Jeanette. Um, great to meet you. Um, I recently was appointed to represent District Four, um, in February of this year. So honored to be here. Um, I, I think as far as my quick bio, um, I work for the California State Assembly. I've been involved in politics for, um, almost two decades. And, um, I have a family of, uh, two grown children and lots and lots of pets and plants.
Okay, thank you.
All right, now we have Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Mike Johnson. Uh, our, our son, we have one son and he just went off to college and, and we knew that he was going to be leaving, so we got a couple cats and that's working out very well. Um, I will just say this, this is a very difficult part of the job for me because, to be frank, I really don't like hearing myself talk. So I think that's enough about me. Thank you.
Great. All right, and now we have Councilmember Halter.
Great, thank you, Nicole. It's nice to meet you and thanks for being here and giving your time to helping us out tonight. I'm, um, originally from Northern California, but been in Southern California most of my life now, went to college at U C Santa Barbara. I majored in chemical engineering and chose to follow my passion after ten years in the corporate world and, uh, in that passion is landscaping. So I've been in the trades now for about thirty years and instead of kids, I have about seventy-three employees. And, um, and I try to help my, the rest of my family and friends with their kids. So, um, other than that, um, I'm very honored to be, uh, the council member elected in District Two. So that's a little bit of me.
I was wondering if you were going to say seventy-three cats there, and that was going to be the, the biggest number I'd heard yet, so we'll go with them, please.
No, lots of dogs.
All right, so, uh, my name is Sofia Rubicava and I am the representative for District One. This is my, uh, third year on council. And a little bit about my background, I attended, uh, UCSB. I studied law in society and Spanish. So I'm currently a translator and interpreter. I work for a school district. And some of the things that I enjoy doing in my, uh, very limited spare time is I enjoy biking to the beach. I enjoy being active. I love dancing and music and just anything that gets me moving. I enjoy movement and, uh, activities. So that's a little bit about me.
All right, well, thank you for that. And I know, uh, for those of you who work together, sometimes you go, really, we're going to spend a couple minutes, you know, getting to know each other, listening to these intros. It's one of the adjustments that we make in virtual facilitations because in a normal environment, back in the olden days when we were face-to-face, there would have been some sort of personal interaction. So you'll see a couple of things we go through, uh, facilitation where there's some adjustments made that we just kind of get through and, and will move forward. Um, next slide.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I just feel like I need to say, I have three kids. Cause everyone said they had kids and pets. And I'm an empty nester, so my boys, I know I look young, but my boys are twenty-six, twenty-five and twenty-one. And one is a marine, so I just wanted to add that.
Ooh, right, all right, thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Um, so earlier, I kind of put the, the foundational quote from Einstein, um, of you can't solve your problems with the same thinking you've used when you created them. The other, uh, quote that we typically use when we go through any sort of strategy conversation um, is this one from Tony Robbins. So if you always do what you've always done, you'll always get what you've always gotten. This one, though, is specific to the process of how we have some of these strategic conversations. So next slide, we say if we want different outcomes and results, next slide, we have to throw out some old thinking. And this is hands down my favorite slide in any strategic conversation presentation. Um, and if I have any other fellow John Wayne fans, if you can, uh, you'll get some bonus points if you know what movie that comes from. So we'll make some, some space for that. Now, one of the things, next slide, that happens when we typically engage in strategic conversations, goal-setting conversations around priorities, is that we tend to put too much stuff in. And that happens for multiple reasons. Number one, either we are adding, um, things in that really don't belong at a strategic level. They tend to be more operational, day-to-day type of items. Or we get what's called, next slide, kind of shiny object syndrome, right? Where we go, ooh, and that, ooh, and that, ooh, and that, and then all of a sudden, we have this, you know, goal list, which is either completely something that we can't accomplish or full of really task-oriented items that will be great to get done but don't really help us actually move the needle in some of those key areas. So that's what these, uh, this series of conversations will be designed to do, is kind of prevent the shiny object syndrome, make sure that we're narrowing it down to the right number of planes to be trying to have takeoff and land all at once so that we can be really strategic with the resources of Ventura. Now, next slide. I facilitate using a very specific framework called polarities. Now, polarities in this case, I don't want you to think of one is good, one is bad, and that there's, you know, like a right way to be and a wrong way to be. Instead, think of them as two things that are both good but happen to be mutually exclusive. And it will be my job through the facilitation to balance between those, and I'll have a way that I'll do it that I'll explain to you. Um, so the first polarity that I'll be balancing, next slide, is efficient pace and having conversations. So we want to get through this, right? We don't want to be here for twenty-four hours. This doesn't need to be a long drawn-out thing. But there are going to be some places where we need to have some conversations, either to come to consensus, get some more information, flesh out an idea, ask some questions of each other. Now, when we bump into a polarity that I need to balance between, like, hey, this conversation's gone on, we need to kind of get back on track and keep moving, I am going to use the word pause, next slide. And I will hold up my hand ridiculously, obnoxiously close to the camera, probably closer than that, and I will say, pause. We need to pause the conversation. And I'll say, it's time to, you know, move back into efficient pace or whatever it is. Now, some of the other polarities that I'll be using, next slide, diverse perspectives and strong points of view. So there are many individuals that will be contributing to this and we want to get those perspectives in. I also want to have space that if there are very strong points of view, I want you to feel heard in this process. So that's another one that I'll be balancing between. Uh, next slide. We'll also be balancing between task-oriented, which is sort of the how, how we get there, and goal-oriented, the what. So in your staff report, we talked about kind of this shift up to sort of a thirty-thousand-foot level for the council, really operating at that strategy level versus the task or operational level, which is what a lot of your goals are right now in the existing plan. Next slide, ensuring clarity and tolerating ambiguity. For my fellow type A people, this is one that you may bump into when we say, we want to do this. Well, what are all the steps to get there? I want to know from A to Z. Sometimes we may need to say, we're going to commit to figuring it out. That would be tolerating ambiguity. On the flip side, if we're so far in the sky that it's really not going to be workable, I might say, hey, can we pause this and come back a little bit into clarity so we can figure out how we're going to do this? Next slide. Um, large group discussion and individual processing. You'll see a little bit in the process of how we have, um, I'll be having some one-on-one conversations with you. In the next two facilitations, you'll notice there will be time for individual processing before we get into group conversation because these types of meetings tend to be oriented towards extroverts, people who like to talk a lot, people who are very comfortable doing that, and oftentimes people who will talk until they figure out the point they're actually trying to make. So allowing some space for individual processing time before we enter into conversation is actually an efficiency measure that's going to help everybody show up fully in the conversation with their highest value, most strategic input. Next slide. A second-to-last polarity is something called concrete work output versus background in theory. So if anybody is kind of squirming in their seat going, she's been talking for fifteen minutes now, are we going to do anything productive? Yes, we are just in the background in theory portion of this because we set the strong foundation so that we move quickly and efficiently through the conversations when we get there. And then lastly, the Ventura fit and what we call the E X B experience, next slide. Um, so this is, uh, simply that you know your community and your team better than I ever could as an outside facilitator. And also, this is work that I do and have done professionally, um, for a long time with a lot of clients. And so between the two of us, blending those together, that's how we're going to get where we need to go. Now, when I bump into a pause point and say pause throughout this, it might be a little awkward, especially if you're the first one, a person that happens to just laugh a little awkwardly and will kind of carry on. So if you are okay with me facilitating using this framework, um, council, I would love for you to just give me a thumbs up. Tracy, next slide. Okay, scrolling through. All right, so if anybody gets paused, life will still go on. We actually have a mayor here in Arizona that we nicknamed Pause, Mayor Pause, because we have to stop him so many times when we do facilitations. I don't anticipate that being a problem with this group. Next slide. When we come into these conversations, there's two things that get in the way of what I would call productive dialogues. There's a whole lot of dialogue that always happens in these sessions. The goal is to keep it productive. We want to kind of keep that on track. And if we solve for these two things, that's really all that we need to worry about. Tracy, go ahead and do the next couple of slides on that one. The two things that get in the way are our mouths and our brains, our mouths and our brains. And if those are the things we solve for, that's how we're going to have productive dialogue. Next slide, because that is the trick of how we change what we use in my company Dangerous Discourse into Extraordinary Dialogue. So before we get into the staff presentations, I have two slides left before we transition back over to them. And I want to set up a conversational framework. So we've got the facilitation framework, but this is actually intended to guide how we operate with each other. And so feel free to use this for the duration of our sessions, but really anytime you're interacting with each other. And this is something, next slide, that we call the Goals of Extraordinary Dialogues. These are four goals that if you use them, when you come into a conversation, it will allow you to show up differently. So remember that quote from Einstein, the quote from Tony Robbins, so that we can drive a different outcome. So the first goal of extraordinary dialogue is to learn. And that says, mind the illusion of certainty. And the illusion of certainty is the thing that makes you say, I already know. I know what we need to do. I know what he's going to say. I know what she wants to do here. I know how that program's going to go or not go. I know, I know, I know. So come into the dialogue willing to learn something. If you already know 90% of it, look for the 10% that you don't know. Second goal of dialogue, find the truth or the best path forward. So this is monitor perception versus reality. I think this is what happened versus I know. In a retro-facing situation, we look for the truth of what happened. In a forward predictive kind of planning situation like we'll be in, where do we need to go together? So looking for that, not I think, but collectively, how can we come to, we feel this is the way that we want to move forward. The third goal of dialogue and one that I often find getting lost, and this is a little bit where that speed of government comes in, is producing results. Are we moving towards action as we're having these conversations? Are we doing it in a productive way that's still driving us to an outcome of some sort? So this is a powerful question. You may hear me ask it. Feel free to ask it of each other at some point if it's a genuine question. But the goal of these is to actually get us somewhere. So if you find yourself repeating things over and over, kind of locked in a stalemate or a debate, it means that this goal of dialogue has gotten lost. The last goal of dialogue is to show up willing to strengthen relationships. Now, it says no lower back tattoos required because this does not mean that we come out of every interaction holding hands and taking selfies together and getting matching lower back tattoos. What it does mean is that we show up in a way that signals to the other person, we are willing to strengthen the relationship if it's possible. Whether or not it happens is sort of inconsequential because this is about our own behavior. So those are the four kind of dialogue, goals of dialogue I'd love for you to entertain as we move through our sessions together. All right, next slide, and then we will switch it over to staff presentations. For this evening specifically, we are here to get a lot of information. So this will seem like you're receiving these. And Councilmember Brown, I see your hand is raised.
I just wanted to do a quick pause. So after you did that last slide, personally, I was just confused a little bit. I know once we get into it, maybe I won't be. However, before the staff made their presentation, I just had a quick question. Is the purpose of the entire discussion to brainstorm so that we have the opportunity to say all the things, ideas that we have? And even though they're not necessarily workable, to then narrow it down once we've done the brainstorming afterwards?
Yep, yeah. And so let's touch on this now and then I'll do kind of a recap towards the end of the meeting this evening. So tonight is really setting the stage for that conversation. So tonight is going to be more getting information, ask back and forth with staff as they go through their information. And then eventually we'll get to the really collaborative iterative part, which is where we're going to identify those high-level goals. So this is kind of the overall. Tonight is that sort of setting the stage for those conversations following this evening. I'll be sending out scheduling links to have individual meetings with all of you. This is one of the adjustments we make for virtual sessions. Those individual meetings, I'll have some specific items for you to consider ahead of time. We'll talk through them. And then that's going to get compiled and sort of regurgitated, I apologize for the vocab, that was the best I could come up with, consolidated back for council at the next one so that you can see them in a way that fleshes out what our normal vocabulary would be key focus areas. So two to three, maybe three to four strategic focus areas at a high level. Within those, that's when we do the back and forth dialogue to create the goals. And that'll be that second, the end of the second meeting, and then the third meeting. And that third meeting will also include the staff strategy plan, the how. So we're really going to keep you at this level focused on the what? Sort of what do we want to achieve at that higher level through the one-on-one than the next session? And then we'll wrap it with some more of that detailed work, which will happen in January. Does that help?
Yes, thanks.
All right. Woo, nailed it. Feeling good. Okay. Tracy, let's switch back over to the staff presentations. We've got a couple of sections there and I know in general, it seems the conversation with the councils that we wait all the way until the end of the presentations for Q and A. Since there's sort of three distinct parts here, the goal update, some financial context and some staffing update. If you have questions throughout, like in each of those buckets, we can do it before we move to the second or the third bucket. Okay. Alex Akbaran, team.
Nicole, thank you very much. That was very good. What a great kickoff. So let me walk the council through very quickly what we're going to call the work plan. The current 2122 work plan that we are endeavoring on. The council received this in a staff report late last week. And we're going to just for the, for the public's benefit and as well as the council's benefit, particularly if they want to ask questions on this kind of the status of where we are. And want to provide a couple of further details before I introduce Danielle Keys, whose last name I didn't know. Moving on to the next slide, please. So a couple of things before we start, there's some, there are some, some demarcations you'll see next to the various 26 items, I believe we have listed here as the work plan. A check mark means the obvious. We are done with that item. It has been completed. A yellow arrow means we are continuing to work on that item through the 2223 work year. For example, the general plan, which is something we're not going to get, we never intended to complete it in 2122. A green arrow is that we intend to complete the goal as state, as stated, in the 2122 fiscal year. So we're going to walk you through all this. Please stop me if you have questions. And the hope is to get through this so that we understand where we stand with regards to our existing efforts on the existing work plan. So the first item on the work plan is the general plan update. I think this council is very well versed on where we stand with that. You've got Councilmember Brown, Council, yeah, Councilmember Brown and Councilmember Halter, who are very intimately involved with this, leading the G-PAC. This process will continue through 2122 into 23. The, the hope is to have a general plan ready to be adopted in 2023. The next item is Ventura Water Pure. Council knows that this is a very significant project, that probably the biggest public works project this city will take on in the next decade or two. Three major tasks associated with that was to build the team. And we've hired the program director, Linda Simenski, and some of her team members have joined. I think we're up to three, if not four, team members. The council will be reminded Ventura Water Pure is presently being run out of the city manager's office. Um, the, I, subitem B there, acquire the site for the advanced purification facility. Council will recall that last week you met in closed session to talk about acquiring a site and the council gave us permission to move forward. We will be bringing back all the, all that paperwork, et cetera, to you, which is really just the first stage. There, the facility, as you know, is a multi-component facility. So there's not one facility to acquire. There will be multiple facilities to acquire, which is why it's shown as a yellow arrow. C would be complete the design and prepare bid documents. Same, same issue there is it's a multifaceted project. The outfall is the first one. This is the mile plus long pipe out into the ocean that will provide the discharge for the brine. Next slide, please. So the next set of goals was related to information technology. Council had two major requests of us. One was to complete the IT strategic plan, which we presented last summer and the council approved it. The second item was to complete the scoping documents for a new ERP system. That has already been completed. In fact, we are out to bid as we speak on the new ERP system and that process will be coming back to the council for next steps in early spring. Next slide, please. There were, there were a number of environmental initiatives the council asked us to pursue. And I'm going to walk through these. You can see there's a couple of green arrows and a, and one check mark. Propose a new energy action plan. This is in process and will be completed in 2122 year. Excuse me, I lost track of mine. And this is going to be kind of some of, some of the groundwork for the climate action plan that is, will be a part of the general plan. So that process is well underway. Council is also aware of item B here, the active transportation plan that we are actively pursuing. We are doing the backbone work on that as we speak. The surveys have been completed and we will be pursuing next steps here shortly. Item C here is the electric vehicle blueprint. And this is really the idea of how do we welcome electric vehicles into the community in a way that people feel comfortable, particularly if they're out in public, being able to charge their vehicles in public spaces. The mobility plan really is the active transportation plan. Interestingly, we were just redundant on the goal. And the final item here on this particular slide is the, is the electric vehicle fleet infrastructure. And this is for our own internal infrastructure so that we can slowly convert to electric, an electric fleet where appropriate. And this will be a multi-year effort and investment. Next slide, please. Item number five here is to implement new water and wastewater rates, including updated net, net zero fees. Council did that very successfully and it was a very significant accomplishment. Item number six, somewhat more controversial, is the completion of the fire operation review. That was completed last April and the council has asked for some follow-up work to be completed through a strategic planning process, which will be done in wintertime. Item seven is the finalized agreement for municipal broadband. This is probably one of the more tenuous items we have. We have completed a, the negotiations with a broadband provider. Staff continues to struggle with the question of is this really the right direction to go? We will be coming back to the council with that conversation at a later date in spring. Number eight is develop a pathway to solvency for the lighting district. Council will be reminded that back in the, oh gosh, I think it was in the seventies or eighties, we created a street lighting maintenance district. Unfortunately, we failed to put in a CPI. So while just the, the district was fully solvent in its early years, it is proving to not be. And the general, the general fund is contributing heavily to literally keep the lights on. That is not necessarily how the system was designed. We are pursuing two paths right now. One is going back to the, the voters, asking them if they'd be willing to, through a perpetuating process, be comfortable with a, a street lighting system that is fully funded. Secondly, we are looking at a process to acquire the streetlights from Southern California Edison. That is a much more heavy lift, but both those action points will be brought back to the council here in spring as well. Next slide. A COVID recovery, obviously, last year at this time, this, or last year in February, when you adopted this, was, it was a very significant issue. And we wanted to get ourselves back into the city, all into the city facilities, and we have successfully done that. And we wanted to be able to establish safe activities and a safe place for our parks and rec programming. And that has been accomplished as well. Number 10, I just touched on this during my brief update earlier about the completion of the city council redistricting effort. That will be done in April, I believe it's April of 2022. Next slide, please. Number 11 is determine feasibility of citywide outdoor dining program. This is a code for Main Street Moves. We have completed both of these. We're able to put into motion a process whereby we can make Main Street Moves permanent. I think that a broader question might still be what about the non-Main Street restaurants, for example, or retailers who want to continue to dine outdoors? We will continue to work on that. Number 12 is complete the housing element by the state deadline of October 2021. We get a workaround on this one slightly while October 2021 is a, is a, is a, is a deadline. The reality is the state gives us 120-day grace period in which we actually submit the plan. We will be coming back to the council in January with the final housing element for consideration and submitting it to the state in early February, which is still within the window of time in which we can submit our plan. Number 13, cannabis, this was a big deal six, nine months ago, and we have completed the process. And we are now in the process of reviewing applications for the non-downtown cannabis dispensaries and operations. That process will be moving forward here through the spring. And you will see when Michael Kuhn makes his presentation on finances, we're starting to show some finger crossing with regards to revenues coming in, in the near future for cannabis sales. And finally, item number 14 here, the council knows that the permanent streamlining ordinance is on your calendar for December 6. And whatever the council does that night, we will know the, how that work plan item will survive for what time. Next slide, please. Four, four more items in the world of land use. The ADU ordinance is something that we're teeing up in January and the IHO ordinance we're teeing up in January as well. The short-term vacation rental ordinance will be teeing up following all that. So in wintertime, there will be a heavy lift. Once we get the, the streamline ordinance behind us, we'll be able to focus planning staff on these efforts. And the last item is going to be the advanced historic context statement in citywide survey. This has been ongoing now for, I think, virtually my entire career here, which is three years as of last week. So this was something put forward by the last council and it's something we are continuing to work on. Next slide, please. So another item that, that we were reminded of last year was we wanted to keep a level of capacity at the staff level. Should things pop up that suddenly caused us to have to pivot and focus on? And we, we pointed out to the council six key economic drivers last year that should something occur, we wanted to make sure we could jump on it and work on it. And this was more sort of externally determined rather than internally determined. And the council will be reminded and very proudly that we have completed the Levis Park Development Agreement. Or, excuse me, we've completed the draft development agreement. The negotiations are done and the council bought off on the term sheet. And we will be bringing the DA back to the council in January. The Trade Desk Site 7, to remind the council, that's the parking lot behind the new Trade Desk. There will be a site there in the corner of Maine and California and working on an arrangement with the Trade Desk to acquire the site. COVID, there was a curveball. Obviously, the Trade Desk is not reconsidering, but they're slowing down their efforts on this, on this, on this front. The beachfront hotel project, this is the Hilton project there on the vacant parcel, kind of at the end of the, of I-FI Surfers, Surfers Point. This is, I would, I don't want to say this is stalled, but this is something the developer has talked to us about a year ago on and we haven't really heard much since. I believe I had a brief conversation with Councilmember Friedman on this very topic the other day. We will, we will see where this project sits. Downtown parking was a very big deal prior to the pandemic. You will recall how much time we spent discussing the building and constructing parking structures. Because of Main Street Moves, this has really changed and we are kind of focused otherwise for the moment. Not to say we're not focusing on parking. We might go, come back at this topic in a different manner. E there is Main Street Moves. Council's very familiar with the status of that project. And F is really the Pacific View Mall, one of our key retailers here in the city. And it's, it's future, whatever it might be. So three of the six are efforts we invested in this year because they, they popped up as things we needed to roll up our sleeves and work on. Next slide, please. So just kind of a high-level summary of the work plan. Nine of the items are completed. 10, we anticipate completing by June 2022. And the balance of the items as planned, we will compete, we will complete in by June of 2023. Next slide, please. So one of the things that, the reason we're doing this slightly differently is council members had raised some concerns last year, or excuse me, in the current year, about the goals and, and where the process as we develop goals, which is why Nicole has joined us. And, you know, some of the concerns you can see here on the slide, we talked about it in the staff report. It, you know, the goals kind of resemble the existing staff plan. We were already part of staff's established, these were already part of the staff's established objectives. Some of them were just way too specific. I think Nicole pointed that out, and then out a bit. They might have been a little bit more like tasks rather than strategies. And we're limited to the timeframe for completion, given some of the budget constraints we have. Next slide, please. So I'm going to introduce Danielle Keys or reintroduce Danielle Keys here. She's going to talk a little bit about organizational capacity, where we stand, where we've been and where we stand with regards to, I'll use the word headcount. organizational capacity, where we stand, where we've been and where we stand with regards to, I'll use the word headcount. What it is, you know, how many people we have on board at, at the present moment, and then we're going to talk a little bit about the financial capacity and constraints as well. Danielle?
Alex, I'm actually gonna
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Nicole. I apologize.
Yeah, no, that, that's okay. Number one, thank you for calling it headcount instead of body count. We appreciate that. Number two, you have the best pun of the session so far with keeping the lights on as far as the lighting district is concerned, so.
That was clever. So you noticed.
Ooh, you got a little checkmark on my side. Um, for Mayor Deputy Mayor Council, any questions on what you've seen so far as far as what Alex just presented? Any comments, anything as it relates to what you've seen or kind of where the conversation is heading? I just want to make sure we capture them there at this point. Yes, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to say, as somebody who has raised concerns about the prior goal setting, that the staff really has done an extraordinary job getting things done this last year. And, and I greatly appreciate that. And, and on issues of things like with, with broadband, of course, it's always important that it, you know, we could adopt a goal, but if it's just not feasible, that, that we move on and, and work on other things. And so those would be my comment. Thank you.
Okay. Just gonna scroll here. Okay. I will say, having worked with teams all over the country over the past two years, report outs like this are in the, the rarity to see that much of productivity that has still occurred in spite of where everybody has been. So I do think that bears mention because it's one of those things that is easy for teams that are living it and working it. So staff side, but, but also for councils, you get very used to those like high levels of, of excellence and output. But just know that this, not every municipality has had that type of success. And so I did think that as far as changing up the plan and the approach, you have a really great foundation to work from as far as moving forward and kind of continuing that. But yeah, kudos. Major kudos to staff and for council for staying on track and accomplishing what you've accomplished. Okay, Danielle, I think we're ready for you.
Great. Thank you, Nicole. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Um, tonight I'm going to be presenting on our personnel capacity and things that might impact your future goal study. Next slide, please. What I want to start with is a five-year in review, look back in review. So you could see where we've been over the last five years as far as our full-time employee count as well as our vacancy rates. What I did was I took a snapshot for the end of each fiscal year, starting in twenty sixteen, seventeen. And you'll notice that we averaged roughly about six percent on vacancy rates from fiscal year sixteen, seventeen all the way through fiscal year twenty twenty one. And then right beyond the black bar on the right-hand side, that is our current year-to-date. So July one to the end of the pay period in October of twenty twenty one. And you'll notice that on the far right, as of October, we have a significant increase in our vacancy rates. We're at now eleven percent vacancy rates throughout our city. And that number, I'll show you in a future slide, is, is really indicative of the amount of civilian staff that are needed to really produce the outcomes of these meetings. And to acknowledge the fact that we are operating at a significantly higher vacancy rate than we have in the past years. Next slide, please. Here you'll see our vacancies by department. I do want to note that while the previous slide did note seventy-four vacancies, the chart that you're looking at shows fifty-two vacancies, and those are what we consider active vacancies. What that means is that there was an individual in the position that has left the position officially, and that is active, actively a position that we could recruit for or are in the process of recruiting for. In addition to that, we have fourteen upcoming vacancies. Those are people that have notified us of their intent to resign or retire. And then we have an additional eight positions which were incorporated into our budget for fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. But, or I'm sorry, fiscal year, yes, twenty one, twenty two, but have not yet necessarily been clarified or allocated specifically to an area yet. So that's how we get to our total number of seventy-four. You will notice that there are nine vacancies listed in police and one in fires, as our public safety agencies wanted to make sure to highlight that eight of the nine vacancies in police are actually civilian positions. That includes dispatchers and a secretary position as well. Fires position is in fact a sworn position. So what these graphs show us is that we are really dealing with a deficiency within our civilian ranks that will support a majority of our initiatives and projects that come forth from these meetings. Next slide, please. So when we're looking at the five-year look back and also projecting forward, we're looking at what are some of the reasons why we're hitting such a high vacancy rate with our recruitments or with our personnel count? One of the reasons is that we have a significantly high separation rate right now. We've had over seventy resignations or separations or retirements since January first of twenty twenty one. We know that there are significant impacts, additional factors, but this chart will show you exactly where those vacancies or those separations have occurred by department. And it might be also telling as far as the types of levels of service that we are attempting to attempting to acquire from our staff and also to serve our public better. Within those factors, as far as why we're here, how we've gotten here, what's impacting our separation rate, or even our retention rate, more importantly, is that we have having, seeing countrywide recruitment concerns. It's not specific to the public sector, but it's significantly impacting also the public sector employers. We also have here at the city of Ventura, market-based salary deficiencies, which is why we have embarked on a class and comp study, which I'll go into a little bit in our next slide. We also have specialized certification positions that have not been able to obtain, acquire, or renew certifications due to the pandemic. Some trainers have stopped training. Some organizations have paused in-person trainings, and so that has adjusted the pool of candidates that we've been getting as well for more specialized positions. We've also, by way of exit interviews, heard that there is some dissatisfaction with the current changes in city culture. Uh, we have also received in our offices increased job studies and reclassification requests, which means every time a position is vacant, sometimes it's not as easy as just going right back out and recruiting for the position that was vacated. Hiring managers may come to us and say, this may not be what we, what we had, may not be what we need. And those studies take time, and it delays our hiring process and keeps positions vacant longer than normal. And then we also have increased full-time positions, which you saw on the previous chart. You saw that there was a significant increase in our percentage of vacancy rates, but there was also an increase of roughly twenty-five to twenty-seven positions on our FTE count based on increases to our IT strategic plan with those positions. And also during some of the vacancies, it has been approved to either split out positions into two, and that in turn has increased our full-time count as well. And then lastly, on the heels of OSHA and the federal guidelines that are anticipated to move forward, we anticipate there could be potential impacts with the vaccine mandate. Next slide, please. And this final slide, this is about what, what are our plans? What are our goals? What is our strategy moving forward? Our first strategy, or one of the many, is to conduct a citywide class and comp study. We have, council did approve at last council meeting, a, or will be approving, I'm sorry, in our, they've already approved that for our class and comp study. We've negotiated with our new vendor, and we're going to be embarking on a citywide class and comp study in January. So we're excited about that. That will look at all positions across the board throughout the city. That process is anticipated to take about twelve months of review. In addition to that, we are going to work together to come up with a strategic approach to implement the changes that are recommended that are brought forward as a result of the class and comp study. We're also looking to hire and train a development position, training and development position. That position will focus on training our internal employees. That will help with our retention levels as well. Um, that will also provide leadership and supervisory training, which should help and impact the, the feedback that we've received about the changes in culture. And that'll also allow us to take the exit feedback and provide different strategies for hiring managers when we are filling a, filling a position. And then lastly, we are going to get, continue to become more creative with our recruitment strategies. We currently because of the pandemic, moved to more virtual interviews. We have streamlined our recruitment processes, including the fast-tracking certain panels for hard-to-recruit positions. We're also looking at video interviewing capabilities where individuals can record their responses to interviews, and they can be submitted to a panel, so they can review them in a more timely fashion, and as well as online testing modules. So those are some of the things that we are moving towards in order to address some of our personnel challenges. And that concludes my presentation. Open to Nicole or any questions from the council.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you for a wonderful presentation. I, I have to say, when I first saw the PowerPoint, the whole thing, I was like, what is all this, you know? Uh, we just need, because I've done focus group sessions and I've worked in public government for over twenty years, and I was like, why can't we just throw the spaghetti on the wall and then go from there? Um, but I do appreciate this because it does provide needed clarification on a lot of questions that we've had. And my one question right now is, will the class and comp studies include a review or a closer look at salary equity and whether there is inclusivity or exclusivity in regards to promotional opportunities?
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Yes, we have actually created even a priority list for our the person conducting our class and compensation study. We will be looking at equity amongst our internal classifications as well as the market outside in our comparable agencies. So it will be an inclusive look, and that will be something that we focus on as well.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Um, Danielle, can you help me a little bit? I, I've done comp studies, not in a city basis. And, and I'm just, help me understand why it's taking twelve months? And is there anything that we can do from a resource standpoint to quicken that process?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, the, the major time-consuming portion of a class and compensation study is actually the amount of review and adjustments to job specs and job descriptions. Here we have over two hundred and fifty individual job classifications. We have a very broad scope. So what's going to initially happen is we have to have the desk audits or the one-on-one, we call them one-on-one meetings. It won't be individually of our entire six hundred-plus employees, but we'll fit, we'll pick groups, and those discussions take time. And then we'll take those tasks, and we'll look at it in comparable markets. So the time of twelve months, it really takes to look at the market, look at our internal structure, and really to work through the recommendations of, of the staff. The other thing to keep in mind, because we do have eight unions here, is that all of these items and these proposed changes do have to go through the unions for, for consideration. So that is, takes up quite a bit of that amount of time as well. So we do have a dedicated amount of staff. We are prepared to bring extra support on if we need to. We can bring it to the council. Of course, City Manager has been extremely supportive of those efforts. Uh, in twelve months, typically it will take up to eighteen months, so we feel pretty confident that we've been diligent with our classifications, our job descriptions thus far, that it'll take a little bit of that time off as well.
Thanks, Danielle.
Any other questions? All right. Okay. Onto the next one.
Michael, you there?
I am. Sorry, wait a second. I, I popped it up, but I realized I didn't have my virtual background turned on. I'll I'm not, I'm just gonna have to stay out of the stuff in the background. Sorry for that. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm good to be with you tonight. Like I said, I'm, I'm, everyone's going to have to go into cover the financial capacity in a form of looking at the five-year outlook, like I said, just kind of um, painting the pictures, giving you some information for consideration as you go through this strategic planning process. Let's go to the next slide, please. Also, I'm going to start out with a ten-year look at our revenues and resources in the general fund. Um, so you'll see that there's two lines in the middle of the graph that will, that's represents the current year. And then to the left, you have historical information, and to the right, you'll have the projected information for each of the revenue categories. So go through them. Um, so next clip, please, going to start off with property tax information. So here we have the property tax information for a ten-year span. I'm looking at the current fiscal year, we think we'll get about thirty-two point one million dollars. And so we think, based off the information that the county has provided on assessed values, we think it'll be about somewhere between a four and a five percent growth over the prior year. And then looking at the projections for each year in, in the outlook, we have a four-point-eight percent, we think it'll, it'll be about a four-point-eight percent growth in the revenues from property taxes, and, and which obviously derived from the valuation of property tax. Uh, moving on, if you could, please, to the next click, we have the sales tax information. Um, so here, once again, we have, you know, we're, we're stacking on top as we go through these categories, and so we have the numbers um, that are showing up that are corresponding to sales tax. Um, so as you can see, we have, you know, we started out this period about twenty-six, just under twenty-six million dollars. And sales tax has steadily grown each year, even during the pandemic, thanks to some changes in the laws regarding the collection of all my sales tax, the Wayfair court decision that we've talked about several times previously. Um, we did continue to see increased revenue growth, although marginal um, in the first year of the pandemic. And then we're, we're projecting those to increase, you know, in the current year, though even despite the lost revenue due to the change in Amazon's corporate structure. Um, we are anticipating that we will see some, some year-over-year revenue growth in sales tax. And then looking at, into the future, we are anticipating that we'll see about a three-point-two percent average increase year-to-year in sales tax. Um, next clip, please. Here we have utility taxes. Like I said, you know, as you can see here, utility taxes is fairly stagnant. It's not something that, um, that historically changes, and we're anticipating that it will stay around the same with the duration of the, of the outlook. Uh, next clip, please. Here we have the other tax category. This is made up of three main components, franchise taxes, TOT taxes, and then the car room tax. And now the franchise tax is predominantly the same or in the same situation as utility tax, right? You know, so kind of historically pretty set, very little variance. Um, whether the economy is up or down, something that's relatively stable. And then the TOT, um, you know, especially looking at the, the current fiscal year, you know, we are seeing strong, really strong numbers in TOT. This could be the best year ever in the history of TOT revenues for the city of Ventura. Um, and so that is something that is, the out year has, out years have been based off of. We're still trying to get a little bit better understanding. I'm, I'm working on coordinating a meeting with this Ventura to kind of talk about some of the insights they have into the industry and into, into TOTs, but like I said, things are looking very encouraging. I worked in Barstot TOT, and you can see that the continued TOT growth is, is projected to help us recover back to our prior our prior status before COVID with the revenues in this category. And once again, I'll, I'll touch base a little bit later on on, on the car room tax, and you'll see why I'm at that point a little later on in the presentation. Um, moving on to the next category, please. Um, here you'll see charges for service. Um, once again, charges for service was, was one of the revenue categories that was heavily impacted by the pandemic. This year, we anticipate you you're having a good year, but still not quite yet recovered to the point where we're doing all the programming that we were prior to COVID. However, next year, the first year in the outlook, we do anticipate, um, you know, full programming available. Um, and then we will start to see that growth in charges for service above and beyond what we've seen before the pandemic. Like I said, so you know, steady, we are anticipating steady growth in that cab category, basically as, as the cost of us providing services goes up due to inflation, we anticipate, you know, the rev, those revenue sources going up accordingly. Um, then moving on to the next clip, please. And here we have the other agencies category. This is, the main revenue recorded here is the motor vehicle licensing fee that the state shares with the city. We will also record extraordinary one-time payments from the state or federal government in this category. Those have been pulled out um, to reduce the noise, and you'll see those a little later on as I move up the chart. Um, but for the intensive purpose of this slide, we are anticipating to see continued strong growth. continued strong growth in the licensing fees that the state shares with the cities. And then next click, please. Here we have the other category. So this is looking at the, the interest revenue the city brings in at fines and forfeitures, licenses and permits, transfers from other funds. And so one of the things that brings the most variability to this category would be those transfers, like I said, as as years go on, there are various transfers to funds for one reason or another. But when you look at the kind of ongoing revenue piece, we are predicting that that will have a steady, but small growth as we are moving into the out-years in the forecast. Next clip, please. All right. And so a little earlier on, I talked a little bit about one-time revenues and how I would get to the later. Well, so we've pulled those out from the categories to really kind of show a picture of what the ongoing base revenues are. So the yellow line below, that's kind of what the base revenues would be without kind of, you know, some changes, some anticipated items coming from various directions in the revenue forecast. So looking at the red, this is extraordinary one-time payments. So in fiscal year 1920, there were some adjustments, cleaning up some funding in the old golf service debt accounts and getting that money where it should have been in the general fund, which was next at one-time item. Last fiscal year, we had the first half of the ARPA stimulus funding. And we also had the transfer of the Edison settlement out of the liability back to the general fund. And then in the current year, we're anticipating receiving the second half of the stimulus funding and about $1 million from FEMA to reimburse the city for a cost associated with responding to the pandemic. Next year, we think we'll get the second half of that money from FEMA. So you know, so kind of with some, a little bit of uncertainty on when exactly we'll get that payment, we split that out between those two fiscal years. For fiscal year 2324, we do think there will be a little bit of one-time revenue related to the the second phase of permitting cannabis retail businesses that Alex alluded to earlier. When that, kind of those downtown permits will come available, there'll be some additional revenue, one-time revenue from the permit sales. And then in the last year, you can see a little red blip, about $1 million. And that is from the deferred revenues or from the deferred car room tax. And the agreement that was approved by City Council, as you can recall, they were going to be given a revenue deferral for the first two years of the contract. And so that roughly $1 million is being deferred will come due at the, during fiscal year 2627. So we've pulled that out as a, as a one-time revenue source. Next clip, please. And then here you'll see new/renewed revenues. And so these are things that, like I said, you know, things that have changed, kind of additional revenue sources that have, that have solidified since the last update that was included in the budget last year. So with the current fiscal year, there's about $800,000 of new revenues that we're anticipating. For the current year, that is coming from the car room tax. Like I said, you know, the car room tax went away with the agreement that was signed. The car room is going to begin operations again, and we will be receiving a payment in lieu of taxes as they're operating at the fairgrounds. And then the other piece is about $340,000 in additional property tax revenue. The, as the Montalvo Community Services District was dissolved, the county was in the process of claiming the old property tax revenues for themselves. However, because that area was annexed by the City of Ventura, we are currently working with the county on a correction to ensure that those revenues come to the City of Ventura as we took over responsibilities to maintain the services in that area. So that's about initial $340,000 a year. So the current year, about $800,000. I'm looking to next year, it's about $3.1 million. So once again, you have those ongoing property tax revenues. You have the car room tax, which is going to grow to about $1.3 million next year. You have the inclusion of starting to receive cannabis taxes from the new retail permits that are anticipated to be issued next spring. And then you also have, we've added back in the red light camera revenues. Previous, under a previous city council, they had directed staff to look at terminate, terminating the red light camera program beginning in FY 2223. After receiving feedback from the current city council, and that is something that staff will be working on revisiting next spring. And it's something that has been added back into the forecast. And so, like I said, so those are the main kind of new additional renewed revenue sources are basically changes in those revenue sources from the last outlook. And once again, so that's the cannabis tax and the Montalvo property tax, the car room tax, and then we also have the red light cameras. And then if we go to the next clip, please, that will show you the totals that we are projecting for the current fiscal year. So as you know, we are actually anticipating we'll see a little less revenue and resources this year than the prior year. However, as you see, it's really just due to the one-time funding. And really, when you look at the yellow, the yellow for next year, we're anticipating, you know, is above the prior, we do anticipate that growth. But just like, you know, for next fiscal year, we're anticipating to receive slightly less revenue next fiscal year than the current year. Once again, that's because of the difference in one-time funding. However, our operational revenues, we do anticipate seeing, seeing that growth. So that is just a hell of an overview of the general fund revenues and resources. If we go to the next slide, please. We're going to run through the same exercise, but for the expenditures.
Hey, Michael.
Once again, yes.
I'm going to pop in real quick because that was, that was a phenomenal run-through of your financial forecast. It's also Monday evening after a full day. So before we get into the next one, are there any questions on that? As it relates to sort of your financial revenue forecast that we just went over?
So Tracy, can we go back one slide, please? Our one click?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes, thank you, Nicole. I have just two quick questions, Michael. Have you guys considered the new federally reinvestment funds for infrastructure?
So the, the funds have recently been signed into law by the president. Like I said, you mentioned for infrastructure. Right? So those are things that we would not really record in our general fund. Those are things that would more impact the CIP projects. So we haven't accounted for those in the general, in the operations piece of the general fund, right? Those are, those are things that we'd look at in the street funds, maybe the water funds, various different CIP.
I just been wanting to ask that question. Sorry. I just, I'm assuming we're going after that, correct?
Yes, staff is already working on a wide list of variety of projects. I said, there's, there's hasn't been a lot of details yet on the specifics. There's kind of some broad categories. But you know, almost every single department head, you know, is routinely kind of looking at, hey, when's that money going to become available with detailed lists on what the type of products we can request?
And since you brought up the Montalvo Community Services District, I just want to know specific to the their increase because of the changes that happened with the district, the demolition and the annexation and having to bring their this, their system on board, if you will. Is there a sunset to the increase in their property taxes related to the community service district? Is there a sunset to that at all?
So there was not an increase in property taxes when the service district was annexed?
Yeah, not, maybe I shouldn't call this property tax, maybe a surcharge or I don't know the correct terminology for it.
So, so the residents in the Montalvo area that was annexed are paying the same rates? And even the business, the residences and businesses that are using water and wastewater in the Montalvo area that was annexed are paying the same rates as the, as the rest of the residents and business inside city limits?
Okay, I will revisit that with you on one-on-one. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ooh, Michael, keep going, truckin'.
All right. Now, next click, please, Tracy. Thank you. All right. And you go one more click, please. All right. So here we're going to start out with the largest spending category in the general fund for personnel. And so as you can see, there has been consistent growth. I mean, there will continue to be consistent growth in this category. We started out the period with about 69 million of growth. You know, there's some, there was some good growth. So in the next year, it's the next year. And then there was a little bit of a plateau that the city reached due to the pandemic, due to various different budget changes that were made to balance the budget. But then, you know, this year, we're anticipating to see that drove, growth trend, trend continue once again. And so for the current year, we're anticipating that there'll be about $78.4 million of personnel costs in the general fund. And then looking at the out-year, basically the growth that you are seeing is to fund the same positions, but with the ongoing merit and cola increases that have historically been negotiated with the various different bargaining, bargaining units in the city. And so that is establishing the base of the personnel costs. There are other, two other personnel costs I did want to point out and just highlight briefly for your attention. If you go to the next click, please. So the first one is shown by this red, these red areas are the unfunded liability payments that we make for our pensions each year. And so this is not the total payment. This is just the increase to the payment. So for next year, we're anticipating that we'll pay $1.6 million more than the current year for unfunded liability payment. And the year after that, 1.3, then 1.2, then there'll be a little blip where there's this tiny, tiny drop for a year. And then we're anticipating an increase of about, about $800,000. And so I do want to caveat that obviously, as we all know, CalPERS had an exceptional return of about 21.3% last year. They are taking that and they are using that to reallocate some of their funding strategies. They're going through some changes. So not all of that increase will go to reducing unfunded liabilities. So they're still in the process of making those adjustments. But that will bring some lowering of our unfunded liabilities in the future, but to be determined at this point. But what we know at this point is, you know, and even, even with that positive return, there will still be increases to the payments for the unfunded liability. So assuming that we just maintain the status quo and make one lump sum unfunded liability payment at the beginning of each year with no additional payments, these, this will be close to what we pay in additional CalPERS unfunded liability fees each year in the outlook period. And then moving on to the next click. This is going to bring up a little tiny gray line. It's going to be really hard to see. This is one of the reasons why you have the numbers above it. And so basically, what you can see here is that there's an additional increase of about $500,000 a year. And this comes from during the fiscal year 1920 budget process, we moved two public safety positions to measure O. We moved a firefighter position and a police officer position. The intention at the time was never to keep those in measure O for the long term. And so in this outlook, we have brought those back to the general fund and included those as personnel expense in the expenses in the outlook. I said, just wanted to point that out so that you were aware that in the outlook is showing the intention to bring those two public safety positions back to the general fund. On the next click, please. Right. And here we have services and supplies categories. I said, this is, you know, a large amount of the remaining expenditure that we do in the general fund. So this is anything from office supplies to professional service fees. You know, printers, et cetera. And so as you can see, there, you know, was some, some growth prior to the pandemic. The pandemic, there was a little bit of a flattening, a little bit of a decline. We're seeing that spending come back during the current fiscal year. And then basically in each year, the outlook, basically we're saying, hey, look, you know, the, the the federal government has a long-term inflationary goal of 2%. And so we're going to increase, you know, kind of the, the budget in those areas by 2% each year in the outlook to match the long-term goal of the, of the Fed's for inflation. Then go to the next slide, please. All right. So here we have our internal services. And this is, you know, the, the amount that departments pay to maintain their vehicles with fleet, the facilities charges, the IT charges, benefits charges, the liability charges. These are the very charges that are paid from each fund, including the general fund for these internal services. And so as you can note, we started the forecast period with about $12 million. I'm going to highlight a few key changes and why we are seeing some larger, some larger growth in this, in this category of expenditures. During fiscal year 2021, the city council added about $2 million a year for the liability fund. As you are aware, there's been a lot of settlements coming out of the liability fund. And so to shore up the financial sustainability of that fund, an additional $2 million a year was added to make sure it's on solid ground. And then, and then, you know, there's been a little bit of inflationary growth for the current fiscal year. And then next year, there is, there's another additional growth during the current year budget. It's come up in a couple of different means before we've talked about it. There was a, there's a transfer of $1.5 billion budgeted from the general fund to IT. And the intent always was to build that into the, the ISF rate model for the IT fund. And so what you're seeing here is that there's a decrease, there's a decrease in transfers and expenses. And then we're moving that into the internal service fund charge as it's billed into the rate model. So there's that jump here that brings it to 16.7. And then from there, we're looking at a basically inflationary adjustments year-to-year. It's kind of an average of supplies and services inflation plus anticipated increases in compensation and benefits for the employees in those funds. If you go to the next click, please. All right. And here we have the transfers. Once again, you'll be depending on the year, there can be a lot of different noise, kind of one-time payments in the transfer line item, depending on maybe what projects are going on in other funds. But the ongoing transfers can, that happen year-to-year in the general under really the debt service. And then the payment that Alex mentioned earlier to the lighting district fund to make sure that that fund is sustainable. So those are what we have going on in the out-years of the outlook. We have the debt service payment for the, for the general fund's debt. And about $600,000 to $700,000 a year, I'm going to the lighting districts to help, to help that district out. And then moving on to the next category, please. Right. And once again, here we have a, you know, a small little category. This is basically all the other miscellaneous stuff. There can be some miscellaneous items that vary from year to year, kind of special one-time things. But in general, we anticipate there'll be about $700,000 in miscellaneous expenditures in each year of the outlook. And then next click, please. And then we do have a total, total for each column. And as you can see, you know, there there was kind of a little bit of a leveling in fiscal year 202021, kind of due to the pandemic. We are starting to see expenditures go up again, and we're anticipating that there will be growth in the expenditures each year, each year in the outlook. Now, you know, continue the pattern. I guess we stopped after the revenue. Let's take a quick stop after the expenditures. Are there any questions real quick for the expenditures?
I think you've wowed them into solids.
There are a few less expenditure categories and revenues as well. If we move on to the next slide, I'm going to take it and kind of bring, bring that information together. And so this is going to be more what you saw in attachment to of the packet. And this, and so what I've done here is I've taken the ongoing resources. So basically everything but those one-time revenues and compared, compared them to our ongoing expenditures. And kind of getting a picture of year-to-year without the ongoing one-time revenue, what do we look like? So the current fiscal year, like I said, we're going to be really close. You know, at this point of the year, you know, $100,000 is white noise, right? But we're basically, we're going to be really close, right around break even, ongoing revenues, ongoing expenditures for the current fiscal year. And then each year of the outlook, there'll be, you know, somewhere between about $700,000 to $1.4 million of ongoing revenue over the existing expenditures. And so, you know, and just a point, you know, to, to remember to highlight. So, you know, looking at, like I said, an early look at next fiscal year. This is basically saying, hey, there'll be about ongoing, an ongoing $900,000 above what is needed to provide the current services in the general fund. And so if we were to say, great, let's spend that $900,000 on X. And then you have the consequence would be in the following year that we'd actually then go from positive point seven to about a negative 200,000. And so like I said, that kind of, you know, would filter down and it have the impacts on each of the years. And then we have the one-time resources below. I said, just so you can highlight there, kind of, hey, total red resources over expenditures. What do we think each year looks like in the outlook? And then that brings us, like I said, to a high level of, you know, what is needed to maintain the same operations that we have today? And I'll look at the anticipated revenues. And so I do want to point out some things that are not included, especially on the expenditure side of the forecast. So not included are unfreezing the nine frozen positions that were frozen due, due to the budget cuts during the pandemic. That any costs associated with the fire strategic plan, whether it be operational or capital-related. Additional salary and benefit increases related to the citywide compensation study. Additional staffing requests for next fiscal year. And then also any increased funding. And then also any increased funding to address deferred maintenance and unfunded CIP projects. So while there is, like I said, there is, um, you know, the first time since I've been with the city, you know, since this is my third budget cycle now. This is the first time I say, hey, we, we think there's gonna be a little bit of surplus. Um, but also at the same time, the message is, is that, you know, there needs to be strategic approach, um, to deciding what we do with that, as there are so are a lot of items kind of calling for the attention of, um, of that small surplus that we are anticipating. Um, if you go to the next slide, please. Um, I did not want to just focus on the, while I wanted to focus primarily on the one projection of the most likely review revenue scenario. I did also want to bring up two other revenue scenarios, just so you are aware. Um, so if you go to the next clip, please. Um, you can see here that we have an economic slowdown kind of scenario. And so what this is basically saying is, you know, hey, look, we're not, you know, this isn't saying, hey, what if a, um, recession were to happen? This is basically saying, hey, what if we were to stop, what if slow growth would have slowed down? What if the, what if the housing market were to start growing so quickly? Um, you know, what if, you know, prices dropped because, you know, there's self temporary inflation, what would, what would that look like? Um, so the, the good thing for next year is it'd be a little less impact next year if that were to happen. Because at this point, property tax, um, for the next budget year is almost set. We're only a month and a half away to when the county is gonna say, hey, look, it's January 1st. We're locking in the property tax, or we're locking the values for property tax purposes. Um, then after that, that would include, you guys said, a little bit lower anticipated, um, sales tax revenues, a little lower on COT. Um, and as you can see, you know, um, if we were to have an economic slowdown, we would be looking at a picture of more, hey, how do we, how do we, make sure we maintain the current services with the revenues available? We'll go on to the next, um, clip, please. This is the optimistic revenue scenario, like I said, you know, so once again, this is saying, hey, you know, we were, we're seeing some good trends in sales tax. Um, it's a little early in the year, like I said, we only have two months of sales tax receipts for the year so far. Um, but let's say that that trend continues, you know, maybe we'll actually have a little bit higher sales tax revenue this year. And then we will grow off that higher sales tax revenue. You know, what if, um, instead of, you know, 4.8% growth in property tax that we see a 5.8% growth in property tax? Um, and that is what we're looking at, except for kind of optimistic best case scenario. And as you can see, there, that gives us a little bit, you know, if, if we go in that direction, right, we have a little bit more um, spending room or a little bit more of a gap between the revenues and expenditures. And so like I said, at the end, this is all just to, um, kind of show you, there, there are various, you know, there's more, way more than three scenarios out there. So there's an infinite amount of scenarios out there with your crunch to show you different numbers and what may or may not happen in the general fund. Um, like I said, we've shown you the most likely, um, the most likely is not gonna be right, there's gonna be changes, we know that. Um, but it's more than likely they're gonna fall somewhere in between, you know, the, the best case and the economic slowdown scenario. And so like I said, you know, like I said, just to, you know, these are projections, they're not finite. Um, just, just remember that. And obviously, as we get changes, um, here in the staff, we will always continue to update city council regarding those changes. So, and that is all I have, unless there are any other questions for city council.
It's too bad you're not more passionate about what you do, Michael. Um, thanks for the, the well-rounded of this, uh, council member Johnson.
Thank you. Just to clarify, Mr. Coonan, could we go back to slide 25, please? Thank you. Uh, as, as we look at this with the, um, staffing requests, uh, that have come in so far across over the trans and 25 positions, that would be, that is in addition to the, the nine frozen positions as well?
That is correct.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you very much for answering it.
Counsel, any other questions? Okay, scanning, not seeing any. Michael, very comprehensive, thank you. To Alex, um, or staff, is that the entirety of the staff presentation?
Uh, Nicole, yeah, that's basically what we have provided to staff, just to basically set the table so the council understands what opportunities and constraints we may have moving forward.
Okay, all right. So not seeing any other questions from council. Um, there is, uh, something called ultradian rhythms. So we're familiar with circadian rhythms, which are the 24-hour sleep-wake cycles. Ultradian rhythms are maximum productivity cycles. And so they're natural energy cycles that everybody experiences. They run in 90-minute increments of high output activity. And then usually 15 to 20 of lower energy output activity. So we are just past the 90-minute mark. Um, let's do a five-minute bio break, if that's all right with everybody. Alex, I need to consider, I'm getting a thumbs up, oh, look at that, thank you for using your thumbs. All right, let's do a five-minute bio break. It's, um, 7:36 and change, so we'll come back at 7:42, and we'll move into the last half of this. All right, it is 8:42. I know folks are still coming back wondering how the heck five minutes went so fast. Go ahead and pop your videos on when you are there. Swallow whatever you've been chewing. Actually, you can keep chewing, so I'm gonna talk for a minute. And then Tracy, when you're ready, um, would you go ahead and pop, uh, the next section of my presentation, um, back up on the screen, pretty please? It will start with the, uh, orange and gray slide that says typical strategy process, EXB strategy process. So while Tracy's pulling that up, um, is there any follow-up? Uh, anybody have any major brainstorms during break? Or any questions that came up of, man, I wish I would have asked that? Okay. All right, so this next part, um, I'm gonna set the stage for you a little bit with what our extraordinary balance, this company's um, process looks like for strategy conversations. So it's gonna be a little bit more of listening and receiving, I know you've had a lot of that. And then because we've got some time for it, um, we're actually gonna do some back and forth and kind of some brainstorming work at the end to prep for those one-on-one phone calls. So, um, go ahead and, uh, click that slide a couple of times, Tracy, to get both of those up there. Yeah, so we're gonna start by drawing a distinction, um, between what a typical strategy process, goal-setting process looks like. Um, and what the one looks like that we're gonna adapt here. So it'll say strategic planning. Um, this is more like strategic goal setting, so it's not the entirety of the plan, but it's, it's fairly close to it. So you're, I'm gonna use this for our reference point. Next slide. So in kind of your typical process, you begin with resources, right? Analyze the current resources, we're gonna look for strengths and weaknesses. This is often when you would do the SWOT analysis, right? The strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats, trends. Um, and from there, you would actually go, next slide, um, to what projects can we do? So based on those resources, numbers of, uh, staff members, um, money, you know, fleet vehicles, numbers of parks, whatever, looking at those resources, what are the projects that we could do? Next slide. And then from there, those projects are really what drive goals. And so you set those SMART goals, the specific measurable, actionable, actionable, um, time-bound goals, right? So that is kind of the, the general process. We go from what resources do we have? Based on that, what projects could we accomplish? Based on those projects, here's the goals that we need to set. Um, next slide. And then that is what gives you your results. This is what you get, um, from that process. So next slide, if you'll remember, I said, we have to sort of throw out some of that old thinking in order to get a different outcome. Next slide, we're gonna take this entire process. And next slide, we're gonna flip it on its head. And so we're actually gonna start with results. Um, go ahead and click, uh, the results are gonna drive your goals. So starting with what are we actually trying to achieve? And then what are the goals that we need to set to get there? Click. Those goals are going to actually drive the projects. So based on those goals, this is the primary work of the council over these next couple of sessions. Based on what you as a body want to see, and from that strategic goal standpoint, staff is gonna take that and with your input collaboratively, work into what are the projects that we need to get us there? Those projects, then, go ahead and click, Tracy, thank you, are going to drive the resources. So instead of letting the resources run the show, we're actually gonna start the other way around. And then back into, okay, here's what it's gonna take to get us there. Next slide. So in this process, because we start with results, um, go ahead and click, we're gonna identify what results you truly want. So what are the results that we really want? Um, so you might say things like, next slide, um, we want to build a new senior center. And go ahead and click, and we say, well, why? So this looks similar to some of the things that are on your goals right now. I mean, that's not on there, but as an example, we want to build a new senior center. Okay, why? Go ahead, next slide. Because we want to have more activities for our seniors. Okay, click, why? And go ahead and go to that next slide, because senior services is ranked low on our citizen surveys. And so go ahead and click, Tracy, when we look at what the desired result is of that, the desired result is not actually to have another senior center. Because if this is the problem that we're addressing, this is where we're headed, that senior services is ranked low. What we actually want to do, next slide, is to increase our senior citizen satisfaction. And there may be, oh, go ahead and click one more time, Tracy. I was anticlimactic. There may be a different way to achieve that outcome. So beyond just, we're gonna put a senior citizen center up, because that's the idea that we thought of, that's the project that we came up with. If the result is actually increasing that senior citizen satisfaction rate, there's maybe a bunch of other ways that we could go to actually make that happen. So next slide, this is where we look at those results. If the result is increasing senior citizen satisfaction, then we're gonna set goals based around this, right? Then we're gonna set those SMART CIA results-based goals. Go ahead and click, Tracy. And that means seemingly impossible yet achievable. So this is the other thing that's very tempting when we put goals or strategy processes together, is that we want to put a bunch of stuff in there to show progress. But it's stuff that's sort of that low-hanging fruit, it's gonna get done anyway, it's already gonna happen. And so that's really not rising to that level of what a goal looks like. So, um, go ahead and go to the next slide. If we look at this as a goal, we might say, we actually want to increase overall senior citizen satisfaction by 20% over the next three years. That's what we're actually trying to achieve, not building the center. We're actually trying to achieve that increased satisfaction. Next slide. That's where we take it from goals into projects, go ahead and click, Tracy. And we identify those projects that you'll take on to achieve that goal, which may be a new senior center. It may be a ride-share program, it may be homebound meal delivery, it could be, you know, whatever it is, a party in the park. It could be any variety of things. But you, as the body of council, have said, this is the thing, that increasing senior citizen satisfaction that we want to work on. Okay, um, any questions on that so far? This is one of those things, my dad was an elementary school principal for 37 years. He always used to say, it says easy but does hard. That's what you'll experience in the next couple of sessions. So it'll feel good tonight. Um, but moving forward, that's often where we get, uh, the most frustration. Um, okay, so go ahead and go to the next slide. So once we have those projects identified, hey, council, here's all the ways we can move the needle. What are the resources that we need to get there? And that's where the conversations will get challenging. As you go forward, you have Michael's, um, comprehensive forecasts, kind of in your back pockets to look at, have some of those conversations. This great, looks like we're increasing, however, there's a lot of that money that may already be spoken for, what does that mean for us? But that's where that resource conversation comes in, instead of starting the other way around. Um, this process, go ahead and next slide, is gonna lead to that kind of new conversation on goal-setting. So in response to some of that feedback from council that we saw earlier in the presentation about what's currently encompassed in the goals document. Um, this is really where we're gonna move into more of that 30,000-foot level. And this is where frankly, um, as a facilitator, I will push, um, the hardest to make sure that this is the right fit for Ventura. But that you're gonna feel, maybe at times as we go through the process, um, like, ugh, this is annoying or that sort of thing. Because, next slide, what we want to do what we want to do is move these goals, go ahead and click, from these vapid goals, go ahead and click, vapid being vague, amorphous, pie in the sky, irrelevant, sometimes delayed, into SMART goals. So go ahead and click on that one, those SMART goals that you're familiar with. Now, at extraordinary balance, we add the third column, which is CIA goal. So seemingly impossible yet achievable. Go ahead and click, Tracy, thank you. And when I, oh, one more time. And when we say this, I don't want anybody to think this is going to get into territory of like, completely unrealistic. This is not something that, you know, we're going to waste our time with. That's why the last two are yet achievable. And that's where we'll have some of those driving conversations to make sure that we're getting into those maybe longer-term goals, those stretch goals that are going to push us a little bit farther, but still within the realm of reality. And we'll kind of navigate that through. Just going to click through, make sure nobody has any questions. Okay. So go ahead and, next slide, Tracy, please. This is the anatomy of a SMART CIA goal. I'm going to show it to you tonight. We're not going to do anything with this really until next session, but I want you to have a little bit of a background for it. So thinking results-oriented, not project-based, seemingly impossible yet achievable, and not low-hanging fruit. So generally, the structure will look like this. What are we trying to, what are we trying to do? What's the action verb? What's going to actually change? What's the thing that's moving? How much do we want it to change? And, you know, how can we actually measure that? And then what's the timeframe? What's the timeframe that we're actually looking to do with this? So not everything needs to happen in the next six months, especially when we're looking to push into some of these longer-term strategy items that are going to cross year over year. So again, you'll see this. Next slide. I'm going to run through a couple of our common errors that we see in strategic plans. Some of these may look familiar, and that's okay. But create a plan is not a result. Next slide. Establish a committee, not a result. Next slide. Develop a training, not a result. Complete a project, next slide, not a result. Research a method, not a result. So those are things that fall into that task-level, project-level line of thinking that we will have space for these conversations, because I'm going to, you'll see actually in a little bit. I want to get some of this thinking from you on the task level so that we can determine where are those strategic key focus areas of the council. But these are not items that are likely to end up in the final goal set. Now, one caveat on this. Sometimes there needs to be, especially when we're transitioning from really task-oriented, lots and lots of goals in there. There's sort of a breaking-in period, like a new pair of shoes. There's sort of a little bit of a breaking-in period where we may have some that filter into the final thing that are maybe more on the task side, or they may need to reside there for communication purposes. So generally, in the strategic planning, strategy, goal-setting area, you don't want anything that is day-to-day operational work. You want those really high-level strategic things. I am not unaware that sometimes there are other reasons for those to live within a plan or a set of goals. So we'll have some space for that. So it's going to sound pretty rigid to get us where we need to go, but know that ultimately, that's that polarity between the EXB process and the Ventura fit when we get there. Okay. So, next slide, please. How do we get there? How do we get there? Go ahead and go to the next one, Tracy, and just do that first click. Thank you. So there's really a couple of more steps that are going to happen in fairly quick succession between now and leading into the next session. So I'm going to give you some homework. The, that's what the idea storm is. It's literally no different than a brainstorm. It's just what my co-facilitator tends to put in our slide deck. So we're going to do some idea storming, some brainstorming. We're doing a little taste of it tonight. That's going to build sort of the bulk of the council one-on-ones. So I'll be meeting with every council member individually to do some interview work, get some input from you. And the reason for that is that by the time we get to the next session, I'm going to be able to take all that information, synthesize it, and give you, based on what I've heard, a starting point for the conversation around your focus areas. So think focus areas at the high level, maybe economic development, land use, citizen engagement, you know, whatever it is, depending on how these conversations come out. In those focus areas, that's where we're going to come down, next slide, into one to two goals per focus area. So by the end of this, we should have somewhere in that range of three to like nine at the most kind of goals. So three to maybe even just to eight. So it's not going to be 26 coming out of that, because there's not that many strategic, truly strategic goals. And that's where it'll get challenging, because most of the time, if I say, draft a goal as it relates to land use, the first things that come to mind are going to be, oh, well, we need to do the general plan update. We need to do some of these area plans, and we need to do these things. So we'll walk through that process together. And next slide, just to remind you, this is what we're going to be going for. So in even in that homework, if I say try and draft a goal for this, this is what I'm going to ask for you to be kind of thinking, because these aren't goals that I'm necessarily going to draft, although I may give you some suggestions based on what I hear. These are going to need to be goals that council drafts. One quick note here. We will have staff, the staff team that's with us tonight and kind of moving forward, they are going to play an important role in this, not in driving your goals, but in being sources of information. So if they start to see a goal and it says, we're going to convert 100% of city, you know, vehicles in Ventura to electric only, right? Not just your fleet, but like literally 100% of vehicles. Somebody on your staff is likely to say, council, perhaps that's not all within our purview. And then kind of bring it down. So they're going to have an informative, interactive role. I may tap them at some point to ask them questions. You can ask them questions. And then ultimately, we want them to have a really good understanding of your goals so that when we get to that last session, they're going to be able to put forward into the task level, here's how we're going to get there, so that you have sort of that clear path forward. Okay. Any questions at this point? I know it's a lot to like, take in for the last couple hours. You're doing well. You look, or you're faking it well, at least. Okay. Let's go ahead, Tracy, go to the next two slides. Yeah, the ones right after this. And we're going to do a little bit of brainstorming. I don't want to let you off too easy today, because I know we were kind of looking at how much time we'd have this evening. So what you can expect from here is we're going to send out the, through my business manager, the link for scheduling those one-on-ones. We're going to do them over the phone unless you have a burning desire to look at me on your screen in the little box for 45 minutes. Yeah, it's nothing personal, me neither. And what I'm going to ask is, I want you to do that idea storm of the top four to six projects or initiatives you want to see accomplished. So it's okay to play in the project or task area for this. Nicole, I really want the, you know, whatever, the mobility plan and active transportation plan, like final adoption. I want a farmer's market on Saturday. It can be, you know, kind of wherever, but think into those things that are really important to you. If you were to look back 12 to 18 months from this process and say, yeah, I'm glad that we did this. This was important. What I'll do is I'll start to consolidate those, and we'll see where the groupings kind of lie, and that generates the focus areas. It does not mean we are committing to doing all of that. So just by putting them on the list, this is a way to kind of sort out and see where the council priorities really are, so that we can focus our goal work there, rather than being too far distributed amongst all of these areas. So your homework is kind of to think of some of those ahead of time and bring those to that meeting with me. Where it says consider higher-level key focus areas, if you know, you know, gosh darn it, Nicole, COVID recovery is like the only thing, not the only thing, but the primary thing that's on my like 2:00 AM list when I wake up. Go ahead and think of it in those terms as well, and we can kind of sift through where the sort of focus is. And that'll really give us a solid place to start with the goal-setting so that we can be really efficient, especially in this type of environment. It'll look a little bit different. Okay. So go ahead and click two more times, Tracy, pretty please. I will send out some information. It says materials, this very well may be an email, depending on what we get back, but you'll have some of that before the next meeting to look through. And then that, like I said, that meeting too, we're really going to hone in on those key focus areas and goals. So at this point, I do want to spend a little bit of time. I know it is later in the day. It's going to be later in the day, the next time we do this. So pendenticulate if you need to, do a couple squats, get that blood flow going back through the rest of your body. I'm going to put just two minutes on a timer. And I do want you to spend just a couple of minutes, see what's top of mind for you. We're not holding anybody to these. Yes, it's being broadcasted and recorded, but this is not your only kiss at the pig. But go ahead and take, I'm going to put two minutes on my timer, and I want you just to jot down individually. So this is the individual processing time, right? What are kind of those four to six things that are top of mind for you as you look into, maybe not the next 18 months, but think more in that. Alex, do you have a preferred timeframe, three years, three to five? Has there been any narrowing on that?
Historically, we've done 18 months, but I think the goal is to, the desire is to think further out, to be a little more time-focused on, you know, three years, five years, you know, kind of legacy issues rather than specific projects.
Okay. So let's play in that maybe like little bit farther space. Yeah, Councilmember Brown.
Just had a question for clarification. These high-level are these ideas that we are coming up with right now? And as we move forward in the process, are we still, so all the stuff that the staff already presented as goals that were from the past, do we have to re-pick those old goals? Or are we only focusing on the new?
You can do both. So if there's one that's in process, that's not done yet, that you want to see kind of live on, or if it's brand new.
If Alex, I saw Alex shaking his head, if you can respond to that, Alex.
No, I was shaking my head to your original question is the existing goals. If there's something there, Councilmember Brown, that you want to make sure continues to live on, something maybe you're near and dear to, for example, a general plan, that could be obviously something that would be probably wanting to look towards completing that could be the kind of goal that would be something from before, but also something that's going to live on.
Yeah, the question I was really trying to get at is, say, if all of us come up with only new stuff, is all the old stuff for sure still going to be done?
Then we'll have a conversation about that. That'll be kind of one of those, do we balance in with this? So do give that some thought. And Alex and staff, as we kind of go through this and we see what bubbles up on the list, and tonight's just the intro exercise, it's not the full exercise. As we go through and we see something like general plan, if we know that's a thing that needs to happen, there's a statutory requirement, something like that, we may decide to let that live in the operations side of the house as one of those things that keeps going. Now, that being said, it would factor into the conversation if you come up with 67 other shiny objects that we want to play with, and we say, hey, and we've still got to put some resources here. So it's going to, it's going to interplay like that. Okay. So I'm going to do two minutes on the timer. Just throw a couple ideas down on paper. I'm going to be quiet for the remainder of the time. And then we're just going to go through one by one. I'll call off the council members and just do a quick report out of these. Again, we're not committing to these. We're just going to start to get a feel for what's going to come out. All right. Go ahead and wrap it up. And again, this is not the be-all and all, but rather a starting point. Okay. So as we report these out, and this again is to give you a feel for the process so that we can really accelerate the conversation next time. We are not looking for agreement. We're not looking for affirmation or consensus. We are looking for understanding. So if anybody says something that you don't understand, this is where we want to have a clear understanding of it as we go through this, okay? So why don't we go ahead and, Mayor, are you okay going first?
Um, maybe if I can go later, just because I'm still writing some stuff down.
Okay. Okay. And again, don't feel pressured to have everything out there, even though we're doing this in a public forum, and I just called on you. Unanticipated. Okay, Deputy Mayor, do you want to go?
Take a shot. So do you want me to number them, or how do you want me to do it?
Just read them off. I'm going to type a couple notes over on my other screen.
So I improved service satisfaction and economic development for residential and commercial permitting process by 30% by the year '24.
Oh, you're already writing goals. Okay, okay.
Is that what you wanted us to do?
Keep going, no, you're two steps ahead. Keep going, this is great.
Okay, increase PERS funding from 72% to 78% in three years.
Okay.
Increase low-income, moderate-income housing by 300 units in three years.
Okay.
I have no idea if 300 is the right number. I just filled something in. And I have a fourth one, but I haven't written it out. We have to say something about water. The project is so large, I just don't know what to say, because we're in the middle of this. But that's, those are my three that were completed. And one, I know that has to be in there, but I have no idea how to say it yet.
Is it, Deputy Mayor, is it more about it's the existing project, like making sure that it stays on track? Okay. Okay. Fabulous. And what you said about like, I have no idea if 300 units is the thing. This may be an area that falls into that tolerating ambiguity. If we bump into, in the goal-setting, something where we don't have the number, like what would be a reasonable increase, we may just put a placeholder X in there, and that might be a follow-up for staff to come back. So if that happens, that's absolutely, okay. Great. Thank you. All right. Councilmember Johnson.
All right, so the first thing for me would be really enabling housing through both the process and through housing programs. We're making great progress on that, but we really can do better. For advancing equity, the places where I would see that would be really a sort of civic engagement and environmental justice. For economic development, we really need to continue working on broadband. And this is, this is something else. You know, I think we, as a city council, we as a city, we should look at something like a progressive real estate transfer tax as a way to maybe fund some of these things. And so that was my short, quick list.
Okay. So Councilmember, on the first one, enabling housing through programs. So we're talking workforce housing, low-income, moderate-income? Okay. Oh, you're on mute.
Yeah, that would be sort of our housing element programs that we're working through, making sure that we can move forward with those.
Okay. And then on the advancing equity, you mentioned Okay, and then on the advancing equity, you mentioned civic engagement and environmental justice. So talk to me a little bit about civic engagement.
Well, I'd like to see us really get to a point where we have live simultaneous translation at our council meetings. I'd like to see more things put out in Spanish, more neighborhood outreach. I think it's been great seeing that, leading into the second thing, which is the issue that we've had around our gas compressor station on the west side. I, I think we as a city need to do better, sort of bringing all the neighborhoods up to a certain standard. And, and that's a long overdue.
Okay, so is there a certain project there or is that a development standard, a consideration on projects that might go with that? It's okay if it's not.
Yeah, you know, for example, we've been talking a lot about trees and, and a big, there was just a big brouhaha this weekend over some trees being cut down. And it's great that we're doing a good job planting trees. We need, for example, to make sure that we look at all the neighborhoods and see which neighborhoods need trees the most.
Okay, okay. And then on the progressive real estate transfer tax, and this may be more to your compatriots on the council, is that common language for the rest of the council? Does everybody know what that's?
They don't, they don't. And this, this gets really to a larger thing, which is this is the first opportunity I've really had to share that with my colleagues.
Okay.
Because of the Brown Act, we can't ever really have an open discussion of something like that unless it's on the agenda. And so that's why this is such a valuable exercise for us.
Okay, and I'm going to ask Assistant Attorney Hagland, is there any, are you familiar with this concept? Is there anything that we would need to know from a legal standpoint prior to the next conversation to see if this is like, we can, we can't, here's the restrictions, because I want to make sure that we're investing the time wisely. You're on mute as well. Second demerits of the meeting issued.
My computer audio is not working, so I forgot to unmute my phone. That is something that we'd have to look into, honestly, I'm not that familiar with it. So I can spend some time looking into it and be able to provide that information later.
Okay, and for, from a resource allocation standpoint, as we enter into these, particularly if there's items that need legal research or a little bit, the idea is to do surface level, because remember, we don't need to go super deep. We need to stay in that kind of maybe tolerate some ambiguity. Yes, this is something that we could look into, do we want to? And then do the full review later, so being cognizant, Andy, even of, of your time. And Alex, that may be a conversation with you as well post-meeting. Okay, Councilmember Johnson, great, thank you. Councilmember Halter.
Great, okay, let's see, I'm not sure I'm playing right, but let me try. Okay, okay, I have, first one is improve community development image throughout the community. And that could be, I can give a percent in increase of satisfaction, but that's kind of getting into the mechanism, I think. I have, and then I have other things that are, well, several things. Things like undergrounding utilities plan for across the city for variety of reasons. Implementing, implementing, not just having a housing element, but having an implementation plan on how we're going to implement the housing element.
Okay.
Things like working on creating amenities such as an amphitheater. Increase revenues in the focus areas across our city, including the downtown and the auto mall. Reduce homelessness, reduce or eliminate preferably, but, and again, didn't put numbers next to that, how much per year, you know, so forth. Highlight historical and other community assets throughout the community, basically so that the community values are seen throughout the community, whether that's in the form of art or beautification or historical elements or dedications. Having an effective loop of transportation throughout the city, something that we would all want to use, maybe it's a tram that goes in a circle and then everything else feeds off of that. Let's see, and measure the steps that we take towards our corrective action for climate change and improve our standards of infrastructure throughout the city. And then like, Councilmember Johnson, I think broadband is also a very high goal to set, especially being two years now on, on Zoom and other, other things across the city and having this constantly dropping and so forth throughout the city. So it would be helpful. Those are just a few thoughts and those are kind of goals to me, or they could be, there's mechanisms that go into reaching those goals and then anyways, those are just some of my thoughts to start with.
Okay. Councilmember, was there anything specific you said improved, you started, you started with improved community development throughout the community?
Improved community, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, is that built infrastructure, is that process internally? And we can dig into that a little more when we chat, but it, just at a high level.
A significant, a significant goal, that's why it was for some of this, is because of the perception currently throughout our city, the image of the city and trying to do business here, business or to build a home here is not good. That image is not good and we know that. So anything we could do to significantly improve that image, I know we're taking a lot of steps to do so right now, but that, that has to translate into an impression in the community that people want to invest here and build the homes that we need and start the businesses that we need. That would be a significant goal to have.
Okay, and yes, that, that's helpful. And just as an example of some of the information that will go into this, Alex, I think I remember, was it 10 vacancies in CD right now? Is that correct? 10.
Order of magnitude, yeah, you're right.
Okay, so again, and for council, this is the interplay to say if this is where we want to focus, then this is where staff is going to focus some of their strategy around that. So, good example. All right, next, Councilmember Sanchez Palacios.
Sure, thank you. Kind of going along with Councilmember Halter's community development point, I have that on my list. Economic development, ensuring that the projects that we've sort of started continue specifically area focus one. I think housing element is also on my list. And I think it's been mentioned broadband and the purification facility. And I, I wasn't sure like how this would fall into a, a goal or not, but improving community involvement and trust. There's a lot of just of lack of trust from our public and our community in our government. And I think I would like that as a, something to consider.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Friedman.
Thank you, thank you. What I jotted down are very broad. There, I, what I believe very basic, they're not particularly exacting. Number one, increase revenues. Number two, to maintain and/or enhance the essential core services that the city provides its residents. We've had a lot of people concerned about the city looking somewhat tired, particularly streets and sidewalks. That has been a goal of the council over the years and we have been putting more emphasis on that. But we can always do more, provided we have the revenues. And something that I've really been thinking about ever since I came back on the council about three years ago. And what brings it to mind is Michael Kuhn's long range or medium range revenue and expense projections with the added caveat that all the other things that we want to do are not factored in there yet. Meaning hiring these people, increasing the position and so forth and so on. So I think the council really needs to take an honest look at our future sustainability. That, if, if, if what we're doing is not sustainable from either a revenue standpoint or controlling or overhead standpoint, a lot of this won't matter because we will not, not be able to provide the services that people want and will actually be going backwards. So rather than having a long wish list of things, to me, that would take us, that would take a backseat to saying all the things that everyone wants, for the most part, cost money. How are we going to afford all this? And how are we going to be sustainable? And I mean, we're, we're, we're doing well managing now, but the writing is on the wall, that it's, it's not going to be easy in the future. So those would be the three items that I would throw up at this particular time.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. I do understand the need to commit to this process, so I will submit to it and be obedient. So my list that I came up with is rudimentary and some of it will probably sound more like projects than.
That's perfect, that's, so we're at that stage, we're not to the drafting goals just yet. So you're good, you're doing good.
Okay, so improving the North Bank on off ramp by reinvigorating the conversation with Caltrans over the next two years, that's kind of thinking about that. And that is something that would be funded by CIP capital improvement funds and hopefully reinvestment funds so that it wouldn't impact the general fund. The consider how, getting, having a southeast gateway sign because the east side of Ventura has an exit, freeway exit and entrance where people come into the city and it doesn't have a feel, a neighborhood or a I don't know how often to say it. Sorry, I didn't, I normally write everything out, but you surprised?
It's, it's perfect and, and, and the, the process at this point is really just kind of that mushy brainstorming piece, just to get us a feel for it tonight.
And then expand the DVO by exploring a P bed for the east side, collaborating with the DVP, visit Ventura Economic Development over the next two years, potentially introducing a relationship with CLU that we are, that already exists in a capstone project. So that staff, so it would decrease the amount of staff work, or work that staff has to do. And the last one is engage in outreach to business owners and property managers on this in southeast Ventura to survey and field interest in that P bed. But in order to decrease, blight, revitalize Johnson retail centers.
All right.
That's it, oh, and of course I support, I wanted to make the comment that of course I support all that's been mentioned by my other colleagues about portable housing and the housing element. In my mind though, I'm trying to balance all those things because as Chair of the General Plan Committee and Chair of the Hopes Committee, I'm Chair of another committee, I can't even remember. It's too many committees. I recognize that there's certain things that we're going to continue to do no matter what and some things are mandated. And so I'm trying to separate what is the mandate and what is like something we can do, not just low, I, I appreciate the fact that you said not low hanging fruit. But big ideas that can be workable and can possibly be done if we find the fun, the correct funding mechanism or whatever, so.
Thank you, Councilmember. Okay, Mayor, back to you.
All right, thank you. Some of the things that I have on my list are like, for example, diversity, equity and inclusion. And that I think continuing to diversify our, our city, our city staff and perhaps boards and committees so that the people that serve on, on these boards and committees reflect the population of our city. And in that sense, we can continue to have more inclusion and that way building that trust with the public and the community. I think if, if people have a voice and are able to participate, I think that, that'll continue to develop and strengthen that trust between the city and the community. A focus on equity, distribution of our resources in an equitable manner throughout the whole city and perhaps focusing on the communities that need more resources or have not perhaps received as many resources in the past. So distributing those resources equitably throughout the whole city. Another thing that's on my list is environmental issues, sustainability, climate change, adaptation. We are a coastal city, so really thinking about how climate change is affecting us now and will continue to affect us in the next, in the coming years. And also moving away from those fossil fuels. And there's an example of Councilmember Johnson mentioned, we have a SoCal gas compressor station right in the middle of a residential neighborhood across the street from an elementary school. So really working with SoCal gas and helping them relocate to another location that is more appropriate for that use. And so really thinking about also like our zoning in our neighborhoods and maybe rethinking the, the industrial uses within our neighborhoods. With regards to climate change and sustainability, also perhaps building electrification and thinking about solar and how we can use that, not just in the city, but you know, throughout our community. Another thing that I think is really important is like how some of my colleagues have mentioned the housing element, really coming up with a plan for implementation so that we can increase the amount of housing opportunities here in the city with a, with a special focus on affordable housing. Because that also relates to one of the topics I was brought up, homelessness. So really looking how all of these things work together. And for that, of course, we're going to need to really strengthen our community development department so that they can have the staff, have the time to really implement all of these things. Another thing, I think, economic development, really thinking about creative ways for us to have some economic development. And just one example that comes to mind is Main Street Moves. Those types of projects where we're just open to, to be creative and do things differently. Another thing that was on my list is mobility and transportation. As we increase the amount of housing, we're gonna think, we're going to have to think more creatively of how we have people move around the city. So just thinking about mobility, adding more bike lanes where we have the most amount of bike riders and having better sidewalks so that people can walk to their destinations. So yeah, just thinking creatively about transportation and mobility. So those are some of the things on my list, thank you.
All right, Mayor, you really made use of that extra couple of times during the other, the report out, noted, noted for future reference. Okay, so this was a great example of the breadth of items. As we work through the one-on-one conversations, like I said, it'll be my job to start to kind of coalesce those into, hey, here's where we're seeing, you know, a lot of focus from the council, you know, that's consistent across each member. And then, hey, here are some of the things that might be outliers or important projects, but maybe not strategic for a focus. And so kind of allowing those to live off to the side. And then working with Alex and his team to kind of set some context for you that if these are areas we start to look at, what are the things that maybe need to take a pause on the list? And are we okay with that? So kind of pulling in some of that counterbalance. So expect some back and forth in addition to the, the one-on-ones as we head into that next session. And then we will go from there. Any questions at this point? I know it's going to feel murky, that's okay. Because I, I kind of know where we're headed with this, but I don't want to leave anybody feeling too unresolved at this point. Everybody needs to be able to sleep tonight, okay? All right, with that, Alex and team or Mayor, I know we are due for a public comment and then the end of it.
All right, thank you so much.
All right, thank you so much, Nicole. That was really helpful and uh, it's actually been pretty fun and I look forward to the next session so that we can continue our work. Um, Madam Clerk, do we have a public communications for this item?
Mayor Rubikava, we received two emails, we posted them online and we have one public speaker this evening. It will be Trevor Gottman. Trevor, I'm going to make you a panelist.
Good evening, everybody. And Nicole, what a wonderful presentation and Alex, fantastic. Thank you, uh, city staff. Um, everybody, this is exactly, I love the upside-down way of approaching things and the high-level view that we need to do and everybody's a consensus on community. And I really want to um, say, I sent an email in because goal does seem sort of like bounded in a way and the etymology is a little vague. Whereas aim enforces a sort of focus and balance. And so if we can sort of, and that's sort of more or less what Nicole comes down to um, coalescing into this project and to this exercise. And I think it's, it's a, it's a healthy way to get to the truth and that's where we need to be. And the way to do it is to keep, we all need to be informed, educated, um, knowledgeable and understand what's going on. And that does take involvement, uh, Community Development Department would be the department to do it, but we need the public interface and we need it on a regular daily basis. So um, I just feel that we're on the right track and um, focusing on this uh, strategic planning in the, you know, from a, from a country point of view. In Namibia, they would do strategic planning. They said in the worst case scenario, you had the the, the primary industries, the agriculture, what feeds the people. And we feed each other, we, and the economy is the household. We are the household, we all work together and essentially, um, how the budget, the resources, we are the resources, are what we are capable of. And so I say, we just build that community development, find out what we're capable of, how we can provide service for each other, find a way to get credits that we can offer service, be recognized um, for, um, in a way that um, serves the individual if they need that, but most, most of the times it's a virtuous thing. We need to be able to live in a place that we can ultimately pass in peace and know that when we've left it, our job is done. And we need to encourage each and every one of us to do that. And so I'm, I'm really glad we've got Arizona involved here because our city can also show the world and show, live in a place that can bring in a peaceful way um, in harmony and sustainability, maintain and, and, you know, we all know what's right. We're born with this ability to, and we each have choice. And when we don't need the choice and we just do the right thing, we can pass out of here. So I want to thank you all for this and continue the conversation. Let's work together. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Gottman. And thank you to all of the uh, all the people that took the time to write an email or a public comment. We appreciate your input. And also thank you to our staff for the presentations and for all of the information shared tonight. We really appreciate the, the beginning of this process and and special thanks to Nicole. I think this was a wonderful first exercise and we are definitely looking forward to the rest of the process. Thank you so much, Nicole. All right, and so with that, are there any, any last comments from Councilmembers? All right, if not, then we will, uh, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, I am really excited about this process. I want to thank you and the city manager for making it happen. Uh, we haven't seen a process like this before. You know, I used to teach and what you know, I was teacher of the year and it was because I did what was called planning backwards. And it was starting with where do I want the kids to be at the end of the year? Then where do I want them to be at the end of the semester? Where do I want them to be at the end of the unit, the end of the chapter? Where do I want them to be at the end of the lesson? And it's great that we're doing that. I really look forward to working with my colleagues so that we actually have that chance to sort of throw out ideas and see what sticks, as, as Councilmember Brown put it. But, but I also just wanted to say, I, you know, in regard to Mr. Gottman's comments, I think we have the world's best gadflies in this city and I always appreciate hearing from Mr. Gottman. So those are my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. All right, any other comments? I think we're all just excited about this process, so thank you so much and uh, thank you, Mr. City Manager McIntyre for hiring Nicole and for starting this process. We, we really appreciate the opportunity. All right, and so with that, we will continue with our next item. Madam Clerk, do we have any additional public communications?
Mayor Rubikava, there is no additional public communications.
Thank you. And so our next item is City Council Communications and Reports for Regional Boards, Commissions or Committees. All right, seeing none, we will continue to adjournment. Our next meeting will be on Monday, December the sixth, twenty twenty-one. And the council would like to wish all of you a very happy and healthy Thanksgiving. We hope that you celebrate with your loved ones and we will see you at the next meeting. Thank you so much. Have a good night, everybody.